In compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act of the State of New Jersey, on January 12, 2024, adequate notice for this meeting was provided as required by law. Additionally, this meeting is being digitally recorded and livestreamed on the Somerset County website. For public access, please email your questions to countyboardmeeting@co.samerset nj.us. The public may participate in this meeting by calling (908) 231-7075. Director Robinson?
Please rise and recite the Pledge of Allegiance together and remain standing for reflections.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As we continue to serve the people of Somerset County, being committed to excellence and innovation in public service, promoting the well-being of all residents and communities by providing effective, efficient, and responsive leadership. May we lift up those who can't speak for themselves, that we continue to be advocates for the voiceless, the homeless, those that have been disenfranchised, and those who have come to this country for help and in need that are in their own homeland, who do not have the luxuries that we have and we take for granted every day. May we continue to lift up those from the Ukraine as we just celebrated another anniversary of their turmoil. May we lift up those who are in Gaza, Israel, as they go through their turmoil. May we continue to lift up this country, the United States of America. Welcome, everyone, to the February 27 work session of the Somerset County Board of Commissioners. This agenda and the items on it are for discussion and will be considered at the next Commissioner meeting of March 12. No action will be taken at this meeting unless the measure and its adoption are needed in a manner necessary to continue county business. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Drake.
Here.
Commissioner Singletary.
Here.
Commissioner Morano.
Here.
Deputy Director Sui.
Here.
Director Robinson.
Here. I will be leaving this meeting early to attend a county function. We're doing the screening of The Price of Silence, so please forgive me for leaving early, and you will be in the capable hands of Deputy Director Sui for the remainder of the meeting. But The Price of Silence is a PBS documentary right here in our own backyard, being done by Beverly Mills and Elaine Buck, but our own county employees who put this together, People of Color Network, as well as employee Rena Johnson. They've done a phenomenal job. This screening, again, it will be held this afternoon. It actually began at 5:30. It will begin at 5:30, 5:03. And we're hoping to make it, that I make it there in time for the panel discussion. But it just talks about the enslaved people of New Jersey, and often people are uncomfortable about conversations about slavery, but it is a part of the American history, and no one should be ashamed, because that was then, this is now. We're all a part of making things better, because we're all human beings, and A Price of Silence is just a documentary to talk about, again, the enslaved people of New Jersey. So we shouldn't shy away from the conversation, but be honest with one another in what we have endured as a country. But other people, not just people of color, have been enslaved or have been in tenements, and we've overcome those things. So time is now is to continue those honest conversations and make sure that we don't repeat the bad things that happened in our history. Also, this afternoon or earlier today, election officials from throughout the state, including our own Board of Elections, Administrator Jeremy Jett and Clerk Steve Peter participated in a tabletop exercise facilitated by the State Department of Homeland Security, State Police, and Secretary of State Lieutenant Governor Taisha Way. The tabletop exercise went through more than a dozen possible disruptions to the 2024 presidential elections, covering everything from terrorism to cyber attacks, to faulty equipment, to disinformation, to violence at polling places. The goal was to prepare our New Jersey's local, county, and state election officials for any eventuality and ensure a free, fair, and open election this fall. So thank you for participating in that exercise and making sure that we have a fair and secure election. And then finally, for my remarks, last evening, the Office of Emergency Management hosted their first responders and OEM officials covering all 21 municipalities for an informational session on freight rail safety and emergency response. Representatives from CSX, Norfolk Southern, Conrail, and Conrail presented their safety plans and answered questions from the assembled responders. Local officials, including those from New Jersey American Water, presented to ensure that the freight companies understood and understand the county's critical infrastructure and population centers. And this meeting was part of, again, the Somerset County OEM's preparedness work that often happens behind the scenes, and they do a herculeanian of a job and continue to keep us safe. But this also ensures all levels of government are prepared to respond in a comprehensive and cooperative manner, regardless of the type or scale of accident or incident. And no one can ever predict what will happen, but we can all work together to be sure when it does happen that we are at the ready. So thank you to OEM for always being prepared. You are some of our unsung heroes, because the work that you do is always behind the scenes until something happens, and then we're depending on each and every one of you. So thank you, first responders. Thank you to OEM for all the work that you do. And that concludes my report.
All right, so we have a special guest here tonight, Chris Edwards. Of course, I'm going to call you out first. He will be making my remarks for the Business Partnership a bit briefer today, but that fancy contraption you see in the front of the room here tonight, that is one of our tourism kiosks. So it is a touchscreen, and Chris will be kind enough to, you know, be our tour guide throughout Somerset County and show you exactly what we have as part of our campaign. On February 14, also known as Valentine's Day, we had the State of the County breakfast. And it was, you know, an incredible morning with heart-shaped pancakes and a brief update for what we were doing with the county. We covered everything from, you know, our largest acquisition for our county park system in 20 years. So Commissioner Morano, I hope I said that with enough enthusiasm, but...
Yes, yes. Get Tom's nose, Tom's tiggering.
From the crowd. But on other notes as well, we actually addressed that food insecurity is actually at an all-time high, and it's something that, you know, it's not front and center in Somerset County, as we do have great areas of affluence, but it is a problem that we do have in our own backyard. And, you know, thanks to our, you know, team here in the county and nonprofits and private sector partners who have helped contribute in every single area, we thank them for their contributions. And it was a full house, so we have to find a bigger venue for next year, but that's a good problem to have. Moving on to this past week, actually, no, on Wednesday of last week, we actually had the Park Commission Volunteer Appreciation over at Nishanik, and it was another full house with volunteers and county staff, and they do an incredible amount of work, really being nimble in terms of how they adjusted during COVID for a lot of the outdoors events, and, you know, how do you still keep that connecting factor? Because what they do on the educational component side is really a key component to many kids with summer camps and different programs that they have. So we continue to thank them and, you know, support our park commission. This past week, we had the rites of passage, African drumming and poetry, on Monday over at North Plainfield, and it was a great room over in the library that was filled, and everyone got their own drums. And it was really just a whole story, starting, you know, over in, you know, how people in Africa first started to use music and incorporate that, you know, as their rite of passage, and how this really came over to the U.S. And it was a great dynamic way, people of all ages, starting with little toddlers in the room, you know, all the way up to adults, you know, just being part of that. So it was a great way for people to be interactive and have a fun way to learn and appreciate all parts of our culture for what makes us who we are today. So we really thank our partners there. And last night, we actually had a time of prayer over at the Ukrainian church, and it was the second anniversary of Russia invading Ukraine. The story that stuck to me most was the clergy that was actually there, that came here from Ukraine. They were huddled around a television, and when they saw the first strike at 8:03 PM, they immediately, there was silence. And the silence in the room, when it was a packed, you know, the church's community center, it resonated with the darkness that came from that time. And the way that the clergy described each other's reaction, the people that still had family in that side of Ukraine, they immediately went on their phones to see, are their family, friends, and any of their, you know, relations that they have there alive? The pictures throughout the room, there were cities that looked like ours, communities, people that, you know, had lived, laughed, and loved, or whatever you want to call it, in their community, and to see the devastation that had taken place there, "never again" was a word that we said during 9/11, and it was something that we thought it would be a time of the past, but it's something that we still see today, and we hope that we could say "never again," and we continue to pray and stand with Ukraine. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Deputy Director. Yeah, I agree, the event yesterday at the Ukrainian Orthodox Church and the Ukrainian Cultural Center was extremely moving. The talks that each of the presenters gave, as well as the photographs that were there depicting of the horrors there, and the horrors that the Ukraine, as a country, have endured for over 100 years now through the Russians. So it's a very moving event, and our hearts go to the Ukrainian people and their efforts at resistance. Also got to spend time with the Deputy Director at RVCC last weekend, as we celebrated two events. The Chinese Cultural Associations from several North County towns collaborated together for an event for celebrating the Lunar New Year, which was very, very well done. And then after that, we popped over to the Planetarium, because the Planetarium had students that were celebrating Black History Month, using the Planetarium to teach particularly young people about how the stars guided those that were escaping slavery. So it was a really interesting thing. I hate to admit it, but I learned that the Big Dipper is always in the north, so follow the Big Dipper and you got north. So it was something I took away from there. Also had a chance last weekend to go on the Five Generals Tour, so thank you to the Heritage Trail Association. They did a magnificent job, as always, visiting those five particular houses throughout Somerset County, learning, again, more tidbits about our county and our history every day. And also, let's see, upcoming, at the Stats House on Thursday, they'll be having a Witness Stone Project, so that's Thursday afternoon at the Stats House in South Bound Brook. I plan to attend. They're also having a celebration at the school, so I'm looking forward to seeing what the young people have put together. Our open space advisory group met. We discussed final details on that purchase of the 400-plus acres of the former golf course in Hillsborough. We did not close yet, I just want to make sure everyone's clear on that, that's not yet done, but we have an agreement with the seller to proceed. But public can't go on that property yet. And we also discussed the Stone Arch Bridge Project, that's the collaboration with Middle Six County at the Bound Brook, South Bound Brook border there. That has not closed yet. Our seller is in agreement to sell to us, and it will close, but we're allowing the seller a little extra time, because they need some extra time to move their business. So we're trying to work with the seller best we can. But those two are still coming down the pike quickly, and we should have some more open space in our inventory, which is always exciting. Last but not least, I invite everybody to a free watch party. It's the Travels with Darley, the 2024 season. This is a PBS special. It's a new episode featuring Somerset County. There's a nice picture over here of Commissioners Drake and Singletary over there, so you may be on the show. You better tune in to see if you're there. It's Tuesday, March 19, so you've got plenty of time to mark it on your calendar. 5:00 to 6:30 PM, the public is invited, so I hope we see you out there. At Flounder Brewery, thank you. I forgot that, to Clerk O'Leaden, Hillsborough, and that concludes my report.
All right, thank you. Paul, we can talk about switching the order a few... So, let's see, last night I attended the VOTEC Board Meeting, and I learned that Social Studies teacher Ed Graff has been named Teacher of the Year by the Veterans of Foreign Wars Department of New Jersey. You know, Ed, he's the one who organizes the Proud to Be an American Day every year at the VOTEC School. It's usually a couple of days before Memorial Day. It honors the people who serve in our armed forces. It's really, every year, it seems to be bigger and bigger, so I'd like to congratulate Ed for that. Also, high school students who are interested in learning more about Raritan Valley Community College's Honors College are invited to attend an information session on March 20 at 6:00 PM. One thing I just learned recently also is about 40% of students at RVCC don't have to pay any tuition. So if you know anyone who's thinking about college but are concerned about the cost, you know, thanks to Pell Grants and various student aid packages, I'd encourage them to take a look at Raritan Valley. And also, the college's president, Michael McDonough, has been appointed to serve on the President's Council of the All-In Campus Democracy Challenge in 2024. He'll be working with 13 other college/university presidents who are committed to full student-voter registration and participation, so congratulations to Mr. McDonough. And that's my report, thank you.
I failed to mention that the Commission on the Status of Women are hosting a scholarship brunch that will benefit the Women's Scholarship Fund at Raritan Valley Community College, and it is being held on Saturday, March 16, 10:00 AM, at the Elks Lodge in Bridgewater, and our very own Colleen Marr is the keynote speaker. Again, donations are $65. You can get more information and register at www.rvccfoundation.org. And again, this benefits the Women's Scholarship Fund at RVCC. So the deadline for registration is Tuesday, March 5, but please go on to www.rvccfoundation.org to register. Thank you. Ms. Marr, do you have anything? Okay. Move right along with our program. We have Employee of the Month. Is Haley here?
Haley.
Mm-hmm. All right, well...
She's still working.
Well, maybe she'll be here at the 6 o'clock, but it wasn't... So I'm going to hand this off to you. She is being recognized as Employee of the Month, so just in case, she's coming at 6 o'clock. There you go.
Putting in overtime.
Moving right along, we have Communications Notice of File in Public Hearing Regarding PSENG Company for Approval of Electric Adjustments Pursuant to the Infrastructure Advancement Program. Notice of File in Public Hearing Regarding PSENG Company for Approval of Electric Rate Adjustments Pursuant to the Energy Strong Roman Number Two Program. And Notice of File in Public Hearing for Approval of Its Clean Energy Future Energy Efficiency Program on a Regulated Basis. New business. Engineering?
24-500 is a resolution approving plans and authorizing receipt of bids for hydroraking at various park commission properties, Phase 1. Hydroraking is a process like dredging, only just the vegetation is removed. This will be bid shortly and constructed this summer and fall, and the estimate is $1 million. Yeah, this is the Three Ponds at the EEC and the 17th and 18th Hole Pond at Warren Brook. Huh? I don't know. 501 is approving plans and receipt of bids for the exterior repairs of Van Horn House Phase 3 in Bridgewater Township. This is the final phase of our exterior renovations. It's the west wing of the project, includes the roof and new clapboards and a new handicap ramp on the back. 502 is authorizing execution of a shared service agreement between the County of Somerset and the Borough of Burnsville for a rectangular, rapid-flashing beacon system on Mount Arrie Road at its intersection with Prospect Street. Prospect is just south of the railroad tracks on Mount Arrie Road. The agreement is for us to pay for and install that as part of our paving project, and Burnsville will agree to maintain it.
Resolution 24-503, supporting the State House Commission pre-application to the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection for the relocation of a sewer main under the Raritan River located in Duke Island Park in the township of Bridgewater and Hillsborough, New Jersey. This is related to the Headgates Dam removal project.
Resolution 24-504 is authorizing release of performance bond, 800052244, to Elite Properties at Bedminster LLC. This is work completed in the county right-of-way and county route 523, in the amount of $97,415. The next is a Resolution 24-505. This is also authorizing release of performance bond, EACX10600072, to Branchburg Center Associates LLC, township of Branchburg, for work in the county right-of-way on Eastern Turnpike, in the amount of $11,878.
Resolution 24-506, for the Office of Volunteer Services, authorizes the application and acceptance of funds from the state health insurance program, otherwise known as SHIP, administered through the New Jersey Department of Human Services, Division of Aging, for the period April 1, 2024, through March 31, 2025, not to exceed $41,000.
Resolution 24-507 is authorizing the execution of a shared service agreement between Somerset County and the Borough of Chester for sharing department of public works, equipment, and personnel. This is for CDL training. 24-508 is authorizing an agreement between the County of Somerset and the Township of Burnsville. This is for multiple roads in Burnsville Township where they want to put license plate readers. These are not going to be on our signals, as they usually are. These are going to be installed on the side of the road in the right-of-way. 24-509 is authorizing an agreement between the County of Somerset and the Township of Bedminster. This is for two roads in Bedminster, also to install license plate readers in the right-of-way, not on our traffic signals. 24-510 is authorizing a shared service agreement between Somerset County Transportation and the Township of Franklin. This is for transportation services.
24-511 is amending R24309 to include the certification of funds in the total amount of $157,058, $157,058 for contracts between the Greater Raritan WDB and three vendors for our American Rescue Plan-funded literacy initiative.
24-512 is authorizing an award of contract to Jersey Print and Associates of Atlantic Highlands for printing and mailing two editions of County Commissioners' direct mail, utilizing an optional one-year extension.
24-513 is approving qualified vendors for various professional engineering and related services for the County of Somerset for year 2024. We had 14 firms that were qualified in 17 different categories. 24-514 is authorizing award of a contract to HaleCon in Bridgewater, New Jersey, for the North Branch Greenway Pickle Bowl Courts, total not to exceed $200,953. This project, the estimate was $319,000, so it was 37... This project, the estimate was $319,000, so it was 37% below the estimate. It's expected to be bid shortly and constructed by July. 24-515 is authorizing award of a contract to GSP Properties LLC, Mendon, New Jersey, for year one of a two-year maintenance contract for repairs to various building structures located in Somerset County, contract number 23019, amount not to exceed $750,000. This is our annual building maintenance contract. 24-516, authorizing award of contract, 23014, to Ray Palmer Associates Dover, New Jersey, for reconstruction of Warren Brook Pool, 500 Warren Brook Road, Warren Township, total not to exceed $1,450,200. The estimate on this project was 1.4 million, so it came in right at estimate. This is a complete renovation of the Warren Brook Pool. The work will start shortly. There's an incentive in the contract to try and get it done by July 4th.[684.25][684.25][laughter] 24-517, authorizing award of a professional service contract to Stires Associates, Somerville, New Jersey, for survey of monument resetting, Block 168, Lot 10, Wirtsville Road, total not to exceed $650. 24-518, authorizing award of professional service contract to Stires Associates, Somerville, New Jersey, for an open-space survey of the handled-with-care property, Block 2, Lots 5 and 5.02, Borough of Boundbrook, and Block 357, Lots 1 and 2, Borough of Middlesex, total not to exceed $5,200. 24-519, authorizing award of professional service contract to Verdantis LLC, Wilmington, Delaware, for environmental engineering service for emergency service training academy, total not to exceed $52,000.
24-520 is authorizing the rejection of a bid response for maintenance and repair water-cooled and air-cooled chillers. 24-521 is authorizing award of contract to multiple vendors for county-wide tree removal and trimming, second year of a two-year contract. We're not certifying any funds at this time. 24-522 is authorizing award of contract to Ritchie's Tire Service. This is for our car and truck tire recycling, from January 1st to December 31st, 2024. It's the third year of a three-year contract, total not to exceed $16,200. 24-523 is authorizing award of contract to Radiac Research Corp. This is for our household hazardous waste events. It's the second year of a three-year contract, total not to exceed $210,627. 24-524 is authorizing award of contract for parts and repairs of commercial lawn park and golf course equipment. It's to two vendors. It's the second, I'm sorry, it's the first year of a two-year contract, total not to
24-525 is approval to pay a confirming order to Cleary Giacobi, total not to exceed 526 is approval to pay a confirming order to Ben Nana, county employee, for reimbursement for attendance at the League of Municipalities Conference on November 14th, total not to exceed $128.32.
24-527 is authorizing certification of funds for previously awarded contracts for Polaris Pharmacy Services, total amount not to exceed $10,000.
24-528, approval to pay confirming orders to Red Pig Veterinary Hospital, John Stalmour Police Academy, Barnum's Healthcare, as listed, total not to exceed $9,306.07.
Resolution 24-529, for the Office on Aging and Disability Services, authorizes certification of funds for previously awarded Witsen contract for the purchase of meals, total not to exceed 24-530 is for the Community Development Office, authorizes the decrease of purchase orders for North Plainfield, Community Hope, Midland School, Midland Adult Services, and the MLK Youth Center, total not to exceed $170,003.06. Resolution 24-531, for Richard Hall Community Health and Wellness Center, approval to pay a confirming order to ASL Interpreter Referral Service for American Sign Language Services for clients, total not to exceed $285.
Good evening. 24, excuse me, 24-532 is the payment of claims and ratifying of the payment of claims.
Resolution 24-533, authorizing approval of pay confirming order to Stop It Solutions, Hombeville, New Jersey, for a license, total not to exceed $3,000.
24-535 is approval to pay confirming orders to AME for additional piping repair costs at 40 North Bridge and Hague Service for March 2023 alarm monitoring, total not to exceed 24-536 is amending and canceling certification of funds to multiple vendors, so we will cancel out $17,201.02. 24-537 is approval to pay confirming orders to Avid Exchange. It's for our utility billing tracking, total not to exceed $1,535.25. 24-538 is approval to pay confirming order to timekeeping, for timekeeping supplies to National Time Systems, total not to exceed $1,978.83. 24-539 is approval to pay confirming orders to Continental Trading and Hardware. That was for bonding material. And Atlantic Salt, for salt, total not to exceed $141,342.41. 24-540 is authorizing a certification of funds for previously awarded contracts to Atlantic Salt for rock salt, total not to exceed $152,000. 24-541 is approval to pay confirming orders to multiple parts and repair vendors, total not to exceed $30,108.47. 24-542 is approval to pay confirming orders to CME. It was for fuel tank inspections. And National Fuel Oil for gasoline and diesel, total not to exceed $66,286.81.
Resolution 24-543, from the Tax Board, approval to pay a confirming order to BRT Technologies for MODIV and KAMA data for the Somerset County Board of Taxation and the 21 Municipal Tax Assessor Offices for January and February 2024, not to exceed $31,036. Resolution 24-544, another one from the Tax Board approval to pay the confirming orders to BRT Technologies for property search data and public access for Somerset County Board of Taxation and the 21 Municipal Tax Assessor Offices for 2024, not to exceed $4,000.
And is it a motion to add the above resolutions, 24-500 through 24-544, to the consent agenda for our March 12th meeting?
Still moved. Second?
Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 There are certain items that we're looking to add to the regular meeting, to be introduced tonight, and then adopted later on today. First one is 24-497, is authorizing a renovation agreement for royalty and game sparring business of Chad and Matt, formerly Image LLC. 498 is authorizing the execution of a participation agreement with the Township of Hillsborough. Hold on, I gotta say this a little more energy to Commissioner Morano. Authorizing the execution of a participation agreement with the Township of Hillsborough for the purchase of Blocks 165, Lots 1, 2, 3, 13, and Block 169, Lot 3, in the great Township of Hillsborough, otherwise known as the Hillsborough Country Club, wherein Hillsborough has agreed to participate by using $1,450,000 of their open-space funds to help support this purchase. There you go. 499, award of contract to Persilay Associates for consulting services for the County Adult Correctional Facility under NJSA 19, colon, 44A, 20.4.
24-499A is authorizing to apply for and accept funding from the state of New Jersey through the New Jersey Department of Corrections for the New Jersey County Reentry Coordinators Program for fiscal year 2024. Funding is not to exceed $100,000, with no county match required. 24-499B is authorizing to pay confirming orders for value services provided Somerset County Jail, total amount not to exceed $1,447.82.
24-499C is authorizing utilization of the state contract to purchase a 2023 Dodge Durango. This is for the prosecutor's office and being paid for by a grant. It's for the victim-witness advocacy division. 499D is authorizing the Somerset County Plane Board to apply for funding from the U.S. Department of Energy for a Community Energy Fellow Program Award. This would embed a professional, either at college, you know, a four-year degree or a master's degree or PhD in sustainability, and help us advance a clean-energy future for the county. He would also like a sustainability coordinator. It's completely funded by the Department of Energy for one year. It's highly competitive, so don't get your hopes up, but we hope we can make a good case with all the work that you've done with the climate change policy statement, sustainable facilities, to help implement that at the county as well at the municipal level.
You said it's one year?
One year.
One year, okay, thank you. Is there a motion to add Resolution 24-497 through 24-499D to the agenda?
Take me.[1374.04][1374.04][laughter]
For February 27, 2024, meeting?
I make a motion.
Is there?[1380.87][1380.87][laughter] That's enough. All right, with much enthusiasm. It's been a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Drake?
Yes.
Commissioner Singletary?
Yes.
Commissioner Morano?
Yes.
Deputy Director Sui?
Yes.
Director Robinson?
Yes. We're now at the public portion of our meeting, where anyone from the public may come up and speak. Five minutes, no yielding of time, no coming up a second time. Is there a motion to open to public?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Ayes having. Anyone from the public wishing to speak, please come up, state your name and address.
Joseph P. Maloney, 27, Stonewick Drive, Hillsborough, New Jersey. Request permission to approach. I have documents that I'd like to give to the esteemed members.
Give it to the clerk.
Certainly, thank you.
I share in the enthusiasm that I've seen tonight amongst the commissioners, and I wish to offer you my sincere thanks and congratulations on the tentative purchase of 402 acres up in God's country in Hillsborough, New Jersey. My goal here tonight is to add an additional .413 acres to your purchase. This property contains an unknown cemetery, which I wish the county to preserve. With the purchase of your 402 acres, along with, I believe it's Lot 10, you completely surround this cemetery. The cemetery has headstones that date back to 1828, was part of, I believe, the Young Allen Track that was up there, based on an 1860 map that I've researched. I could speak more than five minutes on the property. I've been in pursuit of preserving this cemetery for the past five years. I realize it's early, premature, so to speak, for public comment. However, I want the county to be well aware that you can actually possess this property if you perform an adverse claim, to possess this property, since now the county will completely envelop the cemetery. There are several stakeholders that I've been in contact with, many of which have been mentioned here tonight. The Stautsburg-Sarlin African-American Museum, as well as the Bucks and Miss True. There are rumors that there are slaves buried in this cemetery. And again, unconfirmed. I've also done research on the title of this, of the property, and it is unknown who owns the property. I suspect that at the turn of century, when the initial estates up there in the hills were divided, that simply no one wanted it. And there are members of your open-space committee that are, at least one member, is aware of the cemetery and knew it existed. So I encourage the commissioners here to take action and actually possess the cemetery. This dovetails very nicely with Commissioner Morano's plans for a 2026 tour, so to speak, historic tour. The entire area there, off of Wirtsville Road, should be declared a historic area. I'd also like to mention that there are many stakeholders and no adversaries. No one will complain if the county takes over this property. I thank you for your time. I hope you consider this proposal, and once the public is able to comment, I certainly, I understand you hired a consulting company or in the process of hiring consultant property for this acquisition. There are many horse trails. There are streams, brooks, and there are actually additional rumors of at least two other cemeteries, one of which is documented right at the beginning of the Hillsborough Country Club. This one is slightly different, although both have the name of Young attached to them. So I thank you for your time and your consideration.
So, Mr. Maloney, is this all the record you have on this, or do you have additional?
Oh, Joe.
Okay.[1714.54][1714.54][laughter] I knew what I was asking.
I have literally 500 or so pictures.
Okay, so.
I am willing to share.
So that's my point. If you can create like a Dropbox or put it all on a flash drive.
Okay, you're talking to a boomer, but we'll get it done.[1730.62][1730.62][laughter]
Yeah, and then just either email it or drop it off here.
Well, I attempted to email several things over, for whatever reason. I'd rather just print and handle.
Yeah, or on a flash drive, we can walk you through it.
Okay, very good.
Not a problem. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Tom's got a copy of this ready. Yeah. All right.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Maloney.
Benjamin Guy, 35 Patton Drive, Somerset, New Jersey, or Franklin Township. I just want to point out two things. One is, I know, it might have been two, three years ago, the county actually supported VOTEC expansion with Raritan Valley altogether. I just wanted to see whether not Mr. Singleton or anybody else can just give an update, or in the future, give an update on where we are with the VOTEC expansion. I think we gave allocation of maybe $15.2 million to do a VOTEC expansion with the Raritan Valley during the period of timeframe. I was just trying to get aware of where that update. I was just trying to get aware of where that update was with the expansion at all. The reason why I'm specifically asking that question is because with the infrastructure demands that are going on around the country, it is very critical that we get the right people in the certification fields to actually do this expansion. And if we don't have the allocations to do it, we need to look at actually partnership with trade schools and other opportunity people to actually look at how we train the next generation on this, on this, on this process. The reason why I'm asking that specifically is because this one specifically with the state of New Jersey coming up directly with allocations with us expanding very quickly next year because of what's going to happen internationally in 2026, because the FIFA is going to be here in this region between Philadelphia and New York and everybody else. A lot of people will be staying in New Jersey, and the roadways and everything else will be a mess. And again, we want to make sure that we can allocate the proper channels between housing, transportation, everything else to be a welcome state for what's going to happen during that period of timeframe in 2026. So that is the reason why I'm asking that specific question for that field altogether. Additionally, I'm asking specifically because there was alarming report that gave, came out over the last thing. I think I forwarded this to, to, to correspondents, not just in the county, but also in cities that I live in directly about New Jersey disparity study that actually was released, right? So I asked that the, all the, all the county commissioners actually review this report. It is alarming, it's disturbing, and again, we need to take it really serious about what's going on. And the reason why I say that I take this personally is because when you're dealing as a contractor, you're dealing as a vendor here, it's not the people you interact with, it's just a matter of the support they get on the commissioner level to actually make sure that the people that are interacting with these vendors and commissioners, vendors on a regular basis are being handled properly and they're get the opportunities. The reason why we have a big wealth disparity in the state of New Jersey is because of this report specifically. You can tell in the report that this is not, that we're not trying to honor and spread the equity around, around the state. Just ask you to review it. It's about two hundred seventeen page report that is actually out there. You'll hear more about it because there are a lot of subgroups that are going to be making a big noise about this. I'm just trying to get you ahead of it rather than behind it. So that is a conversation you need to, you need to just look at altogether. Additionally, for this, this portion that I want to do, and this will be one of my last comments that is here, is that with everything that's going on around the country, inflation, everything else, I just ask there be a needs assessment done for what's going on in housing, not just about the housing quantities that we're producing, about the variance on the housing program itself. The reason why I say that is because the banking criteria of what they're doing for criterias of depositories and the, the actual fixed income that people have, in order to qualify for the banking algorithm to actually do it for down payments, doesn't match, hasn't matched up with the cost of inflation, right? And if you don't have certain programs that you can actually support these people off of, it's hard for people to acquire and become homeowners or become residents that want to be voting members in this society. That is real critical. And with us actually looking at immigration reform and immigration population, this is going to impact everybody as a society. It's not just about six sectors that have been, that have been already oppressed during the period of timeframe. It's also about the future generations what's going on. So that is, that is one of my other last points. And then the last portion, just from a needs assessment, I know that this will probably be done probably two years out, but just forward thinking always is that because we're in a, I think, the midpoint of the census, I think around 2025, you're supposed to come up with a, maybe a needs assessment report about where you're, you know, where you're at with the census tracts and actually document what's going on. So because we're going into a national election cycle that's actually going on now, we just need to look at the forward thinking of what we need to do for a needs assessment report, not just how Somerset County looks now, but also a little future generation of what's going on because with us actually allocating about one point three trillion dollars for infrastructure reform, we also need to look at what does that look like for Somerset County in the future generations that are there. So that is my time. I just wanted to point out those points. Go ahead. It's actually the state of New Jersey, the state of, state of New Jersey. I think it'll be, it'll, it'll be forwarded to you guys or if you haven't had it, but I just would like you guys to take a chance to look at it and, and just look at it. No, it was a private report. It was a private report. Yeah. So, I said, thank you.
Yeah, the answer to your question in terms of, in terms of Voltec School?
Yes.
The construction is supposed to begin this summer, and the goal is to have it ready by the fall of 2025.
Yes. Yeah. So the reason why I'm saying to get ahead of it is because with the expansion of the Voltec School, and I apologize, I'm taking up somebody else's time, so I know you want to come. So, so the reason why I'm saying about the Voltec expansion is because what it is, is that getting to the Voltec is going to, is already a difficult problem, right, for most people that is there. I know we have transportation, everything else that is there, but the volume of the beds and the people that you're going to be probably trying to accommodate to come there is something that you need to look at from a transportation planning of how the people is there, because I think the expansion is that you're supposed to have another hundred forty-seven potential opportunities that come off the Voltec altogether. So with that being done, that volume of traffic that goes over there is something that needs to be considered, and the elements of who you're going to be actually trying to get, whether or not it's people in Bound Brook, North Plainfield, or anybody else that wants to take advantage of that with Somerset County at all. So that's why I'm just saying, planning wise, not just the epicenter of building, it's also about the utilization of the facility also.
Thank you. Disparity study, Voltec, that was it? All right. Anyone else wishing to speak?
Mayor Richard Ondereco, three twenty-five North Main Street in Manville. Good evening, everyone. It's great to be back. I know you all like seeing me, so, I know. It's good to see, good to be seen. I support the acquisition of that cemetery. You never know who could be buried there. There could be Revolutionary War heroes, anything like that. So if the county can acquire it and help maintain it, that'd be great for everyone. Who's in charge of recycling? Really lays on? Okay, I get a lot of questions from my residents about when the town will have all the large buckets. Half the town seems to have the, the large containers on wheels, and the other half doesn't. And I'm one of them who doesn't, and I would like a bigger container. So that's why I'm here tonight. I want to know why the mayor doesn't have a bigger recycling container.
We do have trucks on order, that we just got the assembly line tickets for May, they'll start to build them. We'll get three new trucks for the automated side loaders, and we'll be able to expand. Won't be a great expansion, but we will be able to.
When do you think that will be?
It's going to take probably six months for them to get built, so November, and then we get them delivered in December, so hopefully by the beginning of next year.
Okay.
For history purposes, there was a delay due to manufacturing shutdown, so our trucks that we had ordered have about two years delayed, and we had a change in vendor. So that's what the hiccup was originally.
Thank you for that. And now I could tell my residents, you know, probably going to be at least a year, right, before?
It's just because of the election.
Yep. On another note, really quick, I have a concern in my, in my borough, and it has to do with our fire department. Last night, I had the honor, distinct honor, of reading a proclamation to honor a firefighter who served our community for fifty years. Fifty years. Last year, I had another one, fifty-seven years. And I'm having a hard time getting volunteers, mainly because the state has made it very difficult to become a firefighter. It takes a lot of training, a lot of hours, and it's a non-paid position. So what I'm concerned about is, is the county looking forward here as to maybe forming a county fire service, like say, one for the north and one for the south of the county for, especially for daytime coverage? I think it would be a great idea because a little town like Manville cannot afford paid fire. We just can't. And I'm sure there's other towns out there that can't either. So, I don't know. We're, we're kind of stuck. And on the same part is, is the rescue squad. My squad's only in service three days a week because they don't have enough volunteers. And they're in a shared service with other towns in the county, but I've noticed that a county down south has started a county rescue squad to kind of supplement the need. So I was wondering if you would also look at that? I think it would be a big, big help for our community because we're getting rescue squads coming into Manville from surrounding towns, and sometimes the response times aren't great. So I'm concerned over that, but I'm mainly concerned about the fire, especially during the daytime coverage, because, like I said, having a hard time getting volunteers. And they don't make them like this guy. His name was Eddie Bridger. He lives by me, and I'm always going to have the image of him, he lives on the corner, I'm kind of catty corner, him running to my firehouse to man the, the engine. And now he's retiring, going down south, and these guys are really hard to replace. I know they're paid fire there. Yeah. I don't know what the cost of that is, though. I know Hillsborough is paid fire during the day with some fire marshals or whatever. Do you know? And lastly, I just want to give a shout out to the Manville Arts Council. They're going to have a art expo at our library, and I'll make sure that every one of you up here gets an invite, because it is pretty cool what's been happening here in Manville with the arts. So it's at our library, and I have the best librarian in Somerset County in Nan Peterson. And that's about it. So keep up the good work, and I'll be back.
Thank you, Mayor.
Hi, Ms. Cox?
Yes.
Hold on one second. No, you can. So you are live, ma'am? Can you just state your name and address, please?
Oh, yes, so my name is Polly Hudson from Longville, and I'm a food and water watch volunteer. I'm here to update you that competitive power ventures, CPV canceled their plans for a gas-fired power plant in Woodbridge. I wanted to give you all a big thank you for passing the resolution against the power plant, working collectively to protect the health of your residents who would have been adversely affected by its pollution, and for taking action to help address climate change. Please note that Charlie Cradaville, Central Jersey's Food and Water Watch organizer, sent a letter via email to your county clerk earlier today officially thanking you. I'd also like to make you aware of other legislation or projects proceeding in New Jersey that will threaten the health of your residents. Right now, the NJ Legislature is considering, quote, "clean energy standards," and Food and Water Watch is working to make sure the definition does not include false solutions such as burning trash or, quote, "renewable natural gas." There is no such thing as renewable natural gas. It's a gas industry scheme to promote the use of fossil fuels and their infrastructure. I encourage you to please reach out to your state representatives and tell them you support one hundred percent clean energy standards and oppose this, quote, "renewable natural gas." Secondly and lastly, the NJ Turnpike Authority is unbelievably moving forward with plans to widen the turnpike by four additional lanes, which will still bottleneck into the same Holland Tunnel at a cost of over ten billion. Since this just means that more lanes will be funneling into the Holland Tunnel, this will not solve any traffic problems. Instead, it will lead to, quote, "induced demand, harm already overburdened communities, and affect all of us because transportation is the number one emitter of pollution in New Jersey." Further, it will add to the climate crisis, taking us in the wrong direction at a time when we just had the hottest year on record, the hottest February on record, when we can all see the terrifying effects of climate change in our own backyards, remember the unbreathable orange particulate matter air from the Canadian wildfires just last summer, and at a time when extreme weather events are becoming more frequent and dangerous. So once again, I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to speak, and a big thank you for taking bold action to protect the health and future of your residents by adopting the resolution against the proposed Woodbridge Power Plant. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you, you too.
That's it?
Call fifty-four, Robin Place Park in New Jersey. I just want to let you know that I made an error in one of my resolutions, twenty four dash five oh nine in Bedminster. That is for welcome to Bedminster signs, not license plate readers. That's at another meeting. So I just want to correct that. Eddie Bridger was a longtime county employee, so I'm glad he's living his dream and moving south like he wanted to.
And then we did receive one email regarding, on behalf of the Friends of the Kennedy Martin Stell Farmstead, they are looking for letters of support as they look to obtain additional grant money. That will be distributed to the appropriate divisions, and you will handle that and prepare letters of support if so desired. And there were no other emails, phone calls, or anything else.
All right. No one else wishing to come forward and speak? Make a motion to close the public portion of this meeting?
Motion.
All in favor?
Ayes.
Ayes have it. We will move on into our regular meeting, and I will pass the baton over to Deputy Director. Thank you.
Thank you, Director, and I'm sure you're going to do great tonight. All right, rolling right into our regular meeting. We are going to start off with a proclamation for Teen Dating Violence Awareness Month. Commissioner Singletary?
Okay, Haley?
Okay, so proclamation for National Teen Dating Violence Awareness and Prevention Month. Whereas National Teen Dating Violence Awareness and Prevention Month started in 2016 as an initiative created by President Barack Obama, and whereas dating violence may include physical force such as hitting or shoving, emotional abuse such as constant monitoring or sexual assault, and whereas one in three teens will experience dating violence before high school graduation, and approximately one in ten teenagers report being physically or sexually victimized by a dating partner, while many other victims do not report it at all, and whereas violent dating relationships can lead to depression, anxiety, drug and alcohol abuse, thoughts of suicide, and have a lasting impact on victims' lives, and whereas all Americans have a role to play in ending dating violence and fostering safe, healthy environments for teens and young adults, and whereas Safe and Sound Somerset is a community resource with free confidential services for children, teens, and adults who experience or witness dating, domestic, or sexual violence, and in 2023, Safe and Sound Somerset assisted four hundred and sixty-five adults and children in Somerset County with survivor-centered counseling, assisted six hundred and thirty-eight survivors with legal education and support, provided seven thousand six hundred and fifty bed nights of emergency shelter, and a two hundred and ninety-five percent increase since 2019, responded to three thousand seven hundred and eight calls and texts to the helpline at six eight eight six eight five one one two two, a one hundred and twelve percent increase since 2019, and provided two hundred and seven outreach and violence prevention programs to six thousand four hundred students and community members, including the Ask Ava podcast for young people. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Somerset County Board of Commissioners declare February 2024 is National Teen Dating Violence Awareness and Prevention Month, and encourage all Somerset County residents to join the campaign and become concerned about the violence that occurs every day to our teens, in the hope of reaching a time when no young person knows the pain caused by dating violence.
How are you?
Thank you so much. My name is Joelle Piercy, Director of Outreach and Prevention. The very first question I ever got asked by a teen in, when I was in this role, was why don't adults take our relationships seriously? So thank you to the members of this commission. Thank you for the members of this county for taking this seriously and saying that our young people's experiences are real and important and valid.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
And next, we have a presentation by Chris Edwards, the CEO of the Somerset County Business Partnership, to explain what is this device in the front of the room?
I have a lot to show and tell, too. Good evening, Commissioners. Thank you for, for having me in tonight. I was just mentioning before, it's a lot better to come in here with a lot of good news versus the first few years I was president of the partnership when it was a lot of rough news during the pandemic. So first, thank you for continuing the public-private partnership for another year. This is actually the twenty-fifth year anniversary of the public-private partnership, which nationally is, is not quite unique, but in the Northeast and especially New Jersey, this type of public-private partnership Jersey, this type of public-private partnership, uh, between a county and a local chamber to enhance the business community, uh, to do tourism, is actually quite unique. I can make an argument that in the last 25 years, a lot of the other counties in the state have tried to emulate what was successfully done here first. So I would just want to thank you all for your support. Um, as you can see, I have a nice winter photo to complement our 65-degree day today. Um, but I'm going to take you through, um, some 2022 hard data, so I'm actually a year behind. The 2023 numbers come out, uh, in May, and then take you into some of what we're seeing in, in 2023. So if you go to the next slide. So, um, and I apologize, I'm going to get very much into the, the weeds here, um, but I think it's really important to see where we're at and how far we've come. So this chart, um, given to us, uh, from the state back in, uh, last May, is a economic, uh, report for tourism impact by county, and 2019 has really kind of been our gold standard of what we're trying to get back to since the pandemic. As you could see, Somerset County had just under 3 million visitors in 2019. The spend was 1.257 billion, with a B, billion dollars, a little over 11,000 jobs. Uh, as you could see, we, uh, lost almost, I think it was 53% of our visitor's spend in 2020 from the pandemic. Uh, we lost almost a million visitors, and, uh, and the job market has, has taken, took a quite a big, quite a big hit. Um, but I'm here to report, uh, 2022 was, uh, a really unbelievable year of growth in the tourism sector for Somerset County. Uh, we got nearly two-thirds of our visitors back, uh, nearly two-thirds of our visitor's spend back, and about half of our jobs. Uh, the job sector is one of those that, um, as you can imagine, is going to take longer, i- if not ever fully come back from the pandemic. If you just think about, um, hotels where there's just not as much cleaning staff as there used to be, uh, restaurants, and a lot of our hospitality industry learned how to operate with less staff. Um, so there's, there's those impacts, um, that might impact the job market for a number of years before we hit 2019 recovery numbers. So this is a very tough graph to read from a distance, but it's an economic breakdown of, uh, the impact by county in 2022. So this is tax dollars, um, broken down into several different sector areas, lodging, food and beverage, recreation, retail, transportation. Uh, Somerset County had the third-largest growth in New Jersey in, in 2022, a 37.4% increase from the previous year. Um, that, to me, coupled with the other counties who were near the top of the list, was a, a major sign that the business community has started to return to, to business travel. Um, it certainly will not come back to what it was previously, but, uh, 2022 was the year that we start to see, uh, big chunks of business travel come back. And if you think about some of the larger companies in Somerset County, how they operate, uh, as a hybrid or a remote business these days, uh, a lot of them utilize our hotels and restaurants for team-building activities. So it's just a different way of bringing back business travel that we're starting to see compared to pre-pandemic. So that brings us to, uh, four item areas in which the business partnership worked with the county on last year, specifically through the ARP funding. So Sip and See, uh, will be, uh, it's actually, uh, two years old, it hit, uh, three, it'll be three years old in, uh, June. Uh, we did a large advertising campaign with the Somerset Patriots. We have a new destination guide, which you have in front of you, and then I'll get to the, the toy up at the front of the room, the kiosk here in a little bit. Uh, so Sip and See, uh, we're thrilled with how this has taken off. Uh, we've had 15,000 completions, uh, over a two-and-a-half-year period. Uh, we've had five different iterations of the program, but it's always essentially been the same, which is, uh, there is a large tourism population that travels to distilleries, cideries, and breweries. Um, our goal is to take what they're doing, but also show them what's available here locally. So that, we always led, it's, it's always viewed as a beer trail, we always led with the sip, but the C is actually the, the most important spot. Um, in the hospitality industry, the most important data for us is how do you get a visitor up to three, four-plus hours of activities? Because that's where a hotel room comes into play, and there's statewide data that shows the average spend of, uh, a visitor for a single day without a hotel room is around a hundred bucks, but when you add an overnight stay, it's around $700. So a lot of our goal in tourism is to couple activities together, um, so people can make it an overnight or, or weekend stay. Um, the destination guide that's in front of you, so that was launched last summer. Uh, it's our first one since the pandemic, and the biggest change that we had, and you're going to see this as a theme going forward between our kiosk and our website, is getting away from the model of listings. Um, I'm sure wherever you travel, if you've seen other destination guides, they could be large encyclopedias listing out every hotel, restaurant in the county. I don't know about you, but I don't need a 50-word description of Olive Garden. So, um, what we're trying to do is give people, um, ideas of what's available locally, whether it's date nights, whether that's, uh, business travel, whether that's agritourism, historical, giving them ideas and then building itineraries, uh, around it. So the book is a lot smaller, but it's a lot more compact with information, um, that people want to see. I think people will love to see, especially in the, the era of TripAdvisor, top 10 this, top 10 that, and that's where we're really focusing on here at the partnership. So that brings us to some of the data we're seeing for 2023, and, um, a lot of what we're starting to see, um, actually, I'm sorry, go, go back, uh, yeah, right. Um, one of the things I want to mention is that the destination guide, part of the ARP funding was to expand our reach of the guide. So pre-2023, our guide really went to the tri-state area, the, the, uh, really the mid-Atlantic states, um, hotels, rest stops, all those areas that you would find in a destination guide. Our goal in, in 2023 was to expand it into two key areas. One was the I-95 corridor, the other was, uh, what I call Big Ten country. So all those schools that, that Rutgers, um, plays in Big Ten games, we know that they stay in our hotels when they, when they're playing in Piscataway. Um, little did I know that Oregon, Washington, and California would join the Big Ten, so we have a little bit more work to do. Um, but that's where you could see the difference, and now you can go to the next slide. We're starting to see some return on, on that data. So this is our website traffic, uh, 2020 compared to 2023. Uh, we're up about 20% year-over-year, but you're starting to see a lot of those states that we've been advertising hit, start climbing up in the rankings. So we have Virginia, Ohio, North Carolina, Michigan, Indiana. Um, that coupled with states where we know we have a lot of companies who have corporate offices, Texas, California, um, Georgia, um, you're starting to see those two things coupled together. So leisure travel and, and business travel together. So our website, um, this is one of the things that I think when we start looking at the hard data and how we're growing as tourism, this is one of those items that you see before you actually start seeing the results. So our website's up 145% uh, since 2019. I just want to recognize Melissa DeFries, uh, our VP of Tourism here. She's, uh, really the expert in terms of design and making it user-friendly, um, and giving that, that, um, new-age feel that we've been looking for. But, um, there's been tremendous growth because a lot of what we're pushing now also leads to, to the digital aspect as well. And then I think probably this is the most important one, right, which is getting back to our pre-2019 numbers. Uh, before the pandemic, we were at 68% occupancy rate as far as our hotels in the county. Uh, this year, we, uh, 2023, we passed, uh, to about 62%. So we're starting to get very, very close. If you just take the last half of 2023, we were right up against, uh, 2020-19 numbers. So I expect, when I'm back here this time next year, that we'll be talking about our numbers reaching, uh, pre-COVID numbers. So what's ahead for the next three years? Uh, there's a lot. I think we're leading with the, the big story here, uh, which is the World Cup and, uh, the 250th. As we start planning that, a lot of what we're, I'm going to talk about is kind of culminating with those two events as they happen simultaneously in '26. So the kiosks, um, I won't get too much into, to detail about this, but this wasn't just about the here and now, this was really about, um, providing a long-term solution for our visitors. Uh, when, we've talked about tourism over the years, um, one of the mindsets that we talked about, uh, whether it was, uh, our Commissioners, Colleen, uh, staff at the county, was not only appealing to travelers, uh, i- in the business community who were coming from a distance, but activating residents and people who were in the area. So, uh, most people don't know that our office, uh, 360 Grove Street, right down the road, is the county's visitor's center. Most people have never gone to that, that place. It's been, been that designation for probably about 15 years, and we would estimate, if you take away the people who were there for the chambers meetings, maybe we had several thousand over a 15-year period. Um, it's very hard for a visitor's center to operate unless you're on the strip in Vegas or maybe in, in Cape May. Um, we've seen from these kiosks where they all came online in November, we've had about 5,500 unique users in those, in those three months. So what that means to me is we can get out information way better than a, a, a physical visitor's center ever could with these kiosks. We have, uh, four, we, uh, through ARP funding, we purchased four last year. Uh, one sits at the corner of, uh, Main and Division outside. Uh, one right now is currently at the Bridgewater Commons. It will be at the, uh, TD Bank Ballpark for the start of baseball season. And we have one at Iron Peak Sports and Events in, in Hillsborough. And then we have, uh, the little baby one here, uh, right in front of you. So that's our mobile version, which, uh, tourism, the county, our partners can take with them to events, uh, around the county. So it's, it's meant to be a piece wherever, uh, Melissa goes. She's got a lot of luggage now to take with her, um, but it's really to be that piece where people are, are interacting with, with what we have. So, um, the kiosks, like I said, were installed in November. Um, they've been in what I've called a beta form for about three months, meaning we've been studying who's, who's using it, how long they're using it, what are they using? Um, we came off cross with a bunch of, like, little facts, like the one in the mall, people were touching our map, which shows the area, thinking they were looking for the mall map, right? So, so there's things like that that we were learning along the way. Um, we learned that the photo, there's a photo booth element to that, um, that, uh, by far and away attracts more people. So you think a way to interact kids and teenagers over, um, huge, uh, uh, opportunity there. So, um, I'm happy to demonstrate, I don't know if, uh, when we do that now or later, um, but I can demonstrate going into it. But, um, we, when we first launched, we had restaurants, hotels, things to do, and, um, it was in that listing format where we just listed everything, and we found that wasn't the best way to do it. So over the last three months, we've been doing a more personalized, um, session. So when you go into that, you'll see, uh, Melissa's top, uh, brunch spots, uh, Lydia, who's our other marketing associate's, uh, outdoor dining picks. So it's a little bit more of a, of a, uh, interactive, uh, homey feel than, than what we initially started with, which was kind of dry. Um, we did have this mobile kiosk in, uh, downstairs in the, uh, uh, right at the, the front doors of the administration building since, uh, it was online February 15th, so about 10 business days. Um, this is just to give you a sample of what we can, what we can track. So we had, uh, 85, uh, total sessions that averaged about three and a half minutes per, per session. Uh, the, uh, time of day, we know 41% of those interactions were between noon and 3:00 PM. Uh, we had another heavy, the next, uh, second biggest one, 34%, was between 3:00 and 6:00 PM, so those people were heading out, uh, for the day. Uh, far and away, about 20%, the most popular screen was things to do, followed by restaurants and places to stay. Uh, the photo booth had two-thirds, uh, went to the photo booth, so again, that was our most popular item. But you could see, um, uh, there was a Revolutionary Spies event, uh, culinary classes, uh, we could see how many times those were interacted. Uh, we can actually see if people went to a website and actually sent directions to a certain place to their, to their phone. Uh, there's also a way for us to get people, long-term visitors' information, so they can enter their information. But if they choose not to, there's also a lot of privacy in place, so we're not, uh, people don't want to give their emails out, they have an option to opt out as well. Um, total, since we launched these on Thanksgiving, uh, we have about 5,000 sessions averaging four-and-a-half minutes, and like I said, we can, uh, restaurants and things to do far and away are, are our top ones, and then we can kind of go deeper into, into that. Um, but that, and then the, the mall specifically, as you can imagine, December was a huge month at the mall. Um, shopping and retail was right up, up top of, with those as well. So this is just the tip of the iceberg, in my opinion. Um, I envision in 2026, trying to get people from, uh, who are staying at the, say, the Bridgewater Marriott, out to our Revolutionary sites as they're in town for a month, with a kiosk in the what, in the lobby. You know, so there's, there's long-term implications here. Uh, we've heard of towns who want their own, so we're looking to partner with some towns to, to, to do it as well. So like I said, I hope this is really just the, the tip of the iceberg, uh, when it comes to the kiosks. I threw a lot out there, especially about the kiosks. Are any questions I can answer? I'll stick around if anyone wants a, a tour afterwards. Um, next slide. So just a couple other things wrapping up. Um, these are our ongoing campaigns that we have throughout the year. Um, the, the biggest ones for us, uh, obviously dining, history, weddings, and, and holidays are huge, um, as you can, you know, you can rattle off 10 great wedding venues in Somerset County. Um, this is, tends to be wedding, uh, date-planning season and that type of stuff, so, uh, there's been huge interest in there. Uh, for the first time in about five, five years, we're filming new commercials in 2024. So these are 20, 30, 60-second spots that, um, you know, pre-COVID and, uh, pre-streaming services you would find on cable, um, that would just be highlighted, um, really kind of visual snapshots of Somerset County. So we're putting together, uh, right now, we're out filming this fall, and then we're going to get some in the spring of some of these locations, um, filming, and then these should hopefully start hitting, uh, airwaves, um, this summer, maybe this fall at the, at the latest. And then like I mentioned, everything really was with an eye on, on 2026. I think there's a very unique opportunity for us to take advantage of, uh, two major things happening, uh, essentially at one time. We are really uniquely positioned to take advantage of not just MetLife, but Philadelphia as well. So these teams who don't know they're going to be here yet, they're qualifying this fall and into the winter, um, what they're doing right now is they're gobbling up hotel room blocks all over the country, all over North America, and then if they qualify and then they find out their location, they'll start taking away the blocks, right? So it's just kind of a, uh, it's just kind of chaotic right now in terms of, uh, what these countries are doing for, for rooms, but we have an opportunity with where we're at to match up training areas like Pingree, like Rutgers, uh, like Iron Peak, with being right in the middle of two major sites and, and company, and countries kind of hedging their bet on where they'll, where they'll host. So that's really exciting for us. Any questions on that stuff?
You're preaching to the choir here. You have your Revolutionary War buff, your apple ball for a few foodies and, uh, people that like the Sip and See side as well, so.
Easy crowd, I appreciate it. So the last thing I want to bring up tonight is, is off from tourism, but, uh, something we're really excited about. Um, and it actually goes, um, in part with what we were talking about before when it comes to diversity, uh, study. So, uh, in 2020, the Small Business Development Center in Raton Valley closed. Uh, we were coupled with Hunter Inn at the time, and now we've, they switched, uh, Somerset County into Union, and the nearest office for the Small Business Development Center is in Elizabeth. And we've, we've heard a lot from the business community that, um, it's just not realistic, um, to make that type of, of travel, uh, especially if you're doing multiple classes, multiple programs. Um, so, uh, the partnership, which has been at 360 Grove for 25 years itself, as we were starting to look at our new space, um, we started talking internally about, can we build out a hub within the organization where we can offer training, educational programs, um, beyond our membership into the community? So, uh, right now, the chamber, we hold meetings and networking events that are 40, 45 minutes long with a guest speaker. long with a guest speaker. What we're talking about here is training, sales training, executive training, business basics training, where we would bring in certified professionals who would give a course, classroom-style. So, we needed a space to do that. Next slide. So, come April, May, we're still waiting. You never want to say when you're moving in, because you're generally usually wrong. But we are planning on moving to 50 Division Street in Somerville. So, we'll be right here in downtown. But the big thing for us is we're expanding our offices to be a hub for business associations. So, our partners at Ride Wise, obviously tourism will be coming with us. But about 2,000 square feet of this space will be dedicated towards training and providing classes for the business community. And why this is important goes to that disparity study that came out last month, that one of the solutions that was in that report was that the local business community work with government to build more educational and entrepreneurial space for underserved business community. So, I would like to say that Somerset County is a few years ahead of where other counties might be if they started that process now. So, this is a really exciting time period for us. Like I said, we plan on moving this spring, and we're planning to open the space this summer. So, obviously, you're going to hear a lot more about that as we get closer. But the partnership is working on, and you go to the next slide, working on solutions for businesses, specifically our downtown and underserved businesses in the partnership. So, I mentioned business basics, financing, health, wellness, and equity are all going to be pillars in which we provide programming for going forward. I think that's it. Is that my last slide? All right. Any questions? I rattle off a lot, I apologize. All right, thank you.
Great job, and, you know, we've heard some of this, and the developments over the past few years have been extraordinary. I think the numbers speak for themselves, and, you know, just seeing people actually showing up and having fun, you've really brought this to life, as opposed to, you know, another old chamber meeting in a conference office. You've really been incorporating all of your members and parts of our community, so thank you.
Thank you. No, and I will say, and this is anecdotal, but there's, in my 12 years at the partnership, I haven't seen more energy in the business community than I've seen now. So, I think people, between pandemic, workforce issues, supply chain issues, they're starting to finally catch some air, and I think we could do some really good things coming out of it.
And one area I just want to highlight from your website, if you are a member of the business partnership, please make sure to utilize the portal for, you know, members, because you get discounts, there are, you know, immediate benefits for people that are members of the partnership. So, I think what people typically ask is, "What are you going to do for me?" And you have answered that question with that portal in itself. So, you know, thank you, and.
Thanks for the sales pitch, I appreciate it.
All right. Moving on to appointments. The Senior Citizen and Disabled Resident Transportation Advisory Board, we have Suzella Joyce, and the Homelessness Trust Fund Committee. We have Heather Beelfelt and Christopher Carvino. Motion to approve, resolutions 24-495 to 24-496. Roll call.
Commissioner Drake?
Yes.
Commissioner Singletary?
Yes.
Commissioner Morano?
Yes.
Deputy Director Sui?
Yes.
All right. Approval of minutes for February 13, 2024. Motion to approve. Roll call.
Commissioner Drake?
Yes.
Commissioner Singletary?
Yes.
Commissioner Morano? Deputy Director Sui?
Yes.
24-399. Ordinance establishing a left-turn lane reservation along Bonnyburn Road, County Route 695, Watchung Borough, Somerset County, New Jersey. Motion to open public hearing on ordinance 24-399.
So move. Second.
All right. Motion to adopt ordinance 24-399.
No.
Oh, I'm sorry. So, I think. Hi. All right. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And motion to adopt ordinance 24-399.
Motion to adopt.
All in favor?
Aye.
I have to.
Oh. Roll call.
Commissioner Drake?
Yes.
Commissioner Singletary?
Yes.
Commissioner Morano?
Yes.
Deputy Director Sui?
Yes.
All right. Did I get a motion to approve resolution 24-405 through 24-3, or 435?
400.
Did I miss a page? Oh, apologies. Thank you, Commissioner Morano. Motion to approve resolutions 24-400 through 24-404. All right, roll call.
Commissioner Drake?
Yes.
Commissioner Singletary?
Yes.
Commissioner Morano?
Yes.
Deputy Director Sui?
Yes.
Motion to approve resolution 24-405 through 24-435. Roll call.
Commissioner Drake?
Yes.
Commissioner Singletary?
Yes.
Commissioner Morano?
Yes.
Deputy Director Sui?
Yes.
All right. And motion to approve resolutions 24-436 through 24-494.
Motion.
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Drake?
Yes, from 24-442.
24-442. Commissioner Singletary?
Yes.
Commissioner Morano?
Yes.
Deputy Director Sui?
Yes.
And motion to approve resolutions 24-497 through 24-499D. Roll call.
Commissioner Drake?
Yes.
Commissioner Singletary?
Yes.
Commissioner Morano?
Yes.
Deputy Director Sui?
Yes.
All right. And could I get a motion to open up to public? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone from the public? All right. Hearing and seeing none, motion to close.
Motion to close.
Motion. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Is there an exec? All right. Can I have a motion to close?
Motion adjourned.
Second.
All right, thank you. Have a good night, everyone.